Yungu madura maya swaram Yungu madura maya trupa Yungu madura maya swaram Ma vanti ka pini te bing chidu Ma vanti ni chuni ha xin chidu Ma vanti ka pini te bing chidu Ma vanti ni chuni ha xin chidu Trupa, 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 trupa Ni trupa, ni trupa, ni trupa, ni trupa Yungu madura maya swaram Yungu madura maya trupa Yungu madura maya swaram Ma vanti ka pini te bing chidu Ma kala kala mola gula le le Xina ni trupayee
Paala paala, kudak si
Ma kala kala mola gula le le Xina ni trupayee Ma kala kala mola gula le le Xina ni trupayee Trupa, 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 trupa Ni trupa, ni trupa, ni trupa, ni trupa Yungu madura maya trupa Yungu madura maya swaram Yungu madura maya trupa Yungu madura maya swaram Ne visvasi china naati mundi Ka paadi naati trupayee Nissa hayase kilo Kala kala china ni trupayee
Paala, kudak si
Nissa china naati le le Ka paadi naati trupayee Nissa hayase kilo Kala kala china ni trupayee Trupa, 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 trupa Ni trupa, ni trupa, ni trupa, ni trupa Yungu madura maya trupa Yungu madura maya swaram Yungu madura maya trupa Yungu madura maya swaram Ma kala gula le le China ni Vitayataha motha Gula le le china ni trupayee Ma kala gula gula le le China ni Vitayataha motha Gula le le china ni trupayee Trupa, 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 trupa Ni trupa, ni trupa, ni trupa, ni trupa Yungu madura maya trupa Yungu madura maya swaram Yungu madura maya trupa Yungu madura maya swaram Ma vanti ka pini te bing chidu Ma vanti ni chuni ha xin chidu Ma vanti ka pini te bing chidu Ma vanti ni chuni ha xin chidu Trupa, 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 trupa Ni trupa, ni trupa, ni trupa, ni trupa Yungu madura maya trupa Yungu madura maya swaram Yungu madura maya trupa Yungu madura maya swaram
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Andarunnu chidru paiketi Devu nikimai ma chilukkam Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Mayima, 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 mayima Ganata, 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 ganata prabhaavulu Yogayogamalu kunainana Neke karugunugaaka, neke karugunugaaka, neke karugunugaaka prabha Oo, maputandriyugu suthram, 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 suthram Sudhi, 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 sudhainana Sudhakrsna prabha Sudhakupathura, suthraurura, mahibonakura, mahagiru Mancheneuura, sarvunakura, sarvadhikari Neke sudhainana, ganata, mayima, prabhaavulu Neke chelisna prabha Hallelujah Devu nikimai ma karugunugaaka Amen Samiavulu Satishu chichunna prathari jesi Kadiya satish Kadiya satish, langa vada rizun, kadiya satishu chichu Mar chunna prathari jesi Vaakya nikki Samyaanu varadi vartam, hallelujah
Stotram, stotram, stotram Mahapashuddha premanaputu milgitma premanaputu Ne kala maya srastamayana, vana thmaya raamun konnaraan Abraham deva mi konnaraanayana Isak deva mi konnaraanayana Rambo deva mi konnaraanayana Mahapitthuru deva mi konnaraanayana Ma deva mi ke skotramanayana Ayah, yuvdekaasamimlu prabha Raghavamantaayana Ne vodprabhu, kapayalu samshralu midukun prabha Kapayaru samshrapu swathantradinochu vedigundu jarugunduayana Oo, dandri, mamalayte prabhu Ne uchithu meen pramuchuppanayana Ne uchithu meen prabhu chuppanu prabha Mamal prieminchilayana Ne sanidhulamamalunchinadukku mi konnaraanayana Nevichinam, meen odaruvan techilayana Ne sanidhulavaskatilavakadupu prabhu Ne yudhulavalkante srastamanavu Antakapa srastamayana bhakumnu prabhu Maandarkichinadukku mi konnaraanayana Ayah, dayusavkulayana Channai prathamunudhe rapichu prabhu Anuvadikilaganayana, maleeshgadun rapichunadukku prabhu Ayah, mi ku vandharanu prabhu Skotramalayana Ayah, savadaralidhuthu prabhu Ayah, mirayu unnimatladana prabhu Ayah, matladayadu ni venayana Ikraninchunna prajjalu, ni prajjalu prabhu Ayah, ikko prabhu vaakya chupchunna dasalu, ni dasalayana Uchiyamga prabhu mira rangamayate krainiayana Mir matladate adbu thal chavite prabhu Mir matladate prabhu ma chintar marthayana Mir sahayam cheman Samastamu mi chethil kappakistu Mamal meen purthiga takichkundu Ni namamne henchistu Meemalay kala pirstu Prabhu ena yesu krishtu namamlo i prathanaduchu naam dandri
Amen, hallelujah Samyaanu, dayusavkulakkistu uliga Sapavukuti, hallelujah
Chiktham Hallelujah 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 I can see that you all are very happy Neen chustanana, miranu chana santoshunavu I am also very happy to be in your midst
Neen vada chana santoshuganu, na ni matja vandhaluku
I am enjoying the fellowship from this morning
Vodheyamunchi neenu, meedho sahavaasani entho santoshisunna
God bless you
Devu nikimulavu deechunaga
You all may be seated
Neen andarunnu vaichesukuchun
I am sure that you were This morning you were blessed by the preaching of the word
Yirodu vedekaasamimana Prasigichalavadi na vaakyaanipatti, mee asirudincha padaranu, neen namuchunna
And again, I am standing before you to preach the word
Marla, yirodu sayandhurumkoda, meemunnu yelavadi, vaakyaanibodincha, bodincha bodhunna
Not that I know something more than you
Daan udeshi veda, neen chappuvaadi, neen ke teeridani kadi
You don't know this, I know that, no, not that intention
Daan udeshi vedanke, neen chappuvaadi, neen ke teeridani kadi Meedho, meedho teeridani chupthulani kadi, daan udeshi
Because God has given you a wonderful pastor
Yedukante, devu, neeku manchida dayusavu nikkichu
Who is preaching and teaching, revealed word, the end time message
Aine neeku, ante kalavatthamalugunichi, prati thani gunichi, neeku chakka gaboostunna Ane neen namuchunna
And I cannot preach something new Or different to what he has already teaching you
Neenu, neeken, nee vattaka, vattamasaane, bodincha keli, neeku teeridamasaane, neen bodincha keli
But what we are trying to do is
Meem ye chaitkani paritistunamante
We want to encourage one another in the word of God
Manu, vokile vokalu prosa inchuvali, devu vaakyaanipatti
So, I only come as your elder brother
Neenu, nee appa petta sahavadurika, mee manchidu vichanu
With love in Christ Jesus
Devu neenu premanipatti, prosa hindo vichanu
Fellowship with you
Meedho sahavaasun kaitaipu vichanu
And to encourage you and establish you in the word of God
Neenu, meemalni, prosa patsarani vichanu Ikka meemal paripuruvale chaydhamanu vichanu
Hallelujah So we will go to the word of God
Manu devu vaakya chalupunna
Romans chapter eight
Roma pratika yividavajayamu
Verses twenty eight and, or twenty nine and thirty
Yeravi yividi, yeravidamidi, muppi
Okay, okay, let us stand for the reading of the word
Yendukaaga, tana kumaridu, aneka sahavadaravu Jeshwadavatu, devu devani munduga erigano Varu, tana kumaridu, saarpyam galavadutaku Varani munduga nenayichu Mariyu, yavani munduga nenayichu Varani peechu Yavani peechu Varani niethi mundugadu teechu Yavani niethi mundugadu teechu Varani mayima parichu
Let us pray O precious heavenly father
Tae kal premanayu unnivadi dandri
The author of this word
I read in John chapter one verse one Ayah, meem yoansavattho ogudacham, ogudachal chalupunna
The beginning was the word, the word was with God, and the word was God
Adiyalu vaakyaamunjamun, vaakyaam devu yedantu, vaakyaame devu neenidu
This is thy word given to us in printed form
Ayah, ne vaakyaamun, maakku, muttrichavali roppunu maikichavayenbu
And we know that this word is Christ
Ayah, a vaakyaam, nee edikadu, yesu krishtu tapa
We are taking this word in our hands and we are handling it now
Ayah, meem i vaakyaani ma chethalukkisponi, daan meem yala pravithunchalama, meem geelijing
Lord, thou art the interpreter of thy own word
Ni venayana, nee akva vaakyaanik anuvadakurupanu yunavu
We pray, Lord, that thou will give us the meaning of the word
Ayah, meem i kosu prakristunam, danda vaakyaani sariyana, artana, maapuva mani
Open our eyes of understanding
Ayah, ma kallamadu teerikinaayana, i vaakyaan antongyeskodu, maapu sahayijinaayana
And help, and reveal thyself to us through thy word
Ayah, nee, a vaakyaanidu, neenu, bayalparichuavani, adukuchunna maya
Help us to come into closer fellowship with you
Ayah, ne uchithu, maadu, takkaraka sahavaasun cheman, meem adukuchunna
To know thy perfect will
Ayah, nee akva, paripuruvane chittamme, teeliskodu
And to surrender ourselves
Ayah, mamal neenu, neeku samarpichkodu namaya
That thy will may be perfected in us
Ayah, nee akva chittamme, ma jivitaaloo, neravirnu kaka
We ask this in the name of thy son, Lord Jesus Christ
Nee akva prathari yesu namu, adukuchunna namu, dandri
You may be seated, God bless you
Daichesukuchun, devu nikimudichunaga
My precious brothers and sisters
Na premanikvani sahavaduri, sahavadarara
It is a great privilege
Idi chana goppa aadikketha
To know that we are in the end time message
Manu, i ante kalavatthamalugunade, manu chalam, goppa aaditita, yuvadi
Now, what is this end time message?
Asli enti, i ante kalavatthamamante enti
Everyone say end time message, end time message, end time message
Pratyavakali yodhurara, ante kalavatthamam, ante kalavatthamamani
There are people who have, you know, the political parties In Andhra, Dabarnado And if someone belongs to a political party, they have the photo of their leader Laminated and in their pocket, they have transparent shirt When it is there, everyone can see who is their leader
Manu Andhra Pradeshu lagani, Tamil Nadu, Rajasthan Manu rajikia partiyu, rajikinaayikilu, manu chustumuntam Prajal ingaasana, rajikinaayikala photo lukkisponi, vala jethmeda veskutam Vala dani patti, vala a partiki sammaninchilavali, adi kutthu daavutunvariki
Like that, many people will have this photo
Chala mandi, prajal, i ante kalavatthamalugunnavu, varu Biam pranangal photo, var jethmeyeskodu
He is our beloved brother
Aine kavalam, manu premanikvani sahavaduri
He is God's appointed prophet
Aine, devu yeh parichina pravthayenadi
But because we have his photo with the pillar of fire in our pocket Does not guarantee that we are in end time message
Pravthaika photo, manu jethmedesponi, aine tagme da, adhisammo vandani Daanipatti, manu, ante kalaviswastu mani, chappalim
If I have a picture of the flying eagle That does not guarantee or authorize me to be in the end time message
Manu jethmeda, yeguchinna pakshiradu, bhamma eskunanta, maatra Manu neenu ante kalaviswastu mani, suchareenidu
If I have the seventh scenes book in my arm That is no guarantee that I am in end time message
Eed mudukam, postakam, na sankala vepkunanta, maatakana, neenu ante kalaviswastu neeripavu
So what is end time message?
Asli enti, ante kalavatthamamante enti
The end time message in one sentence, it is The revelation of the Lord Jesus Christ
Ante kalavatthamamante, i prabhu, yesu krishti, akva prattekshatna, guni, denuskovali, ante kalavatthamam
If the Lord Jesus Christ is revealed to you through this message You are in the end time message
Prabhu, yesu krishtu, i ante kalavatthamam, vaththamam, tarmu kaam, neeku prattekshat, parichukunte Gaani ante kalavatthamam
If he is not revealed to you
Ayah, vada, neenu, tana bayal, neeku bayalparichakapote
You will say you are going to end time message church
Ne jappuvaadi, ante kalavatthamam, chetchi kathrani, sahavaasani kathrani, maatramay
You will be one of a big group
A petta sahav, a gumpur, a lugal, a collective
But you are not really, actually in the end time message
Kadi, nuvvaatramu, i ante kalavatthamalu, viswastu, gatta maatram, kane kavu
Kindly forgive me, I don't mean to hurt anyone's feelings
Daijessi nannu, shaminchandi, naayatu, udeshi, meemal baadapetavani kadi
No, the prophet himself teaches us, this end time message does three things
Pravthaa, tanthataan, aene bodinchalu, ante kalavatthamam, mulu lakamayu untrini
One, one
Mokiti
It reveals that God to us
Aine, devu, neeku, aine, tanudan, neeku prattekshat, parichukuntadi, fastidhi
Secondly
Redhoni
It shows you and me who you are, who I am
Aine, neenu, nannu, edukuntadi, ehaani, neeku yavaro, needi yavarnani Ayah, manu teeridasta, nuv yavarnani, ayah, naav teeridasta, needi yavarnani
You don't know, I don't know
Manu teeridu, aavishadu
Who are we?
Manu yavarnani
Why are we on this earth?
Manu, edukii, pumme, dunnamani
What is the purpose?
Daan udeshi veyuti
We don't know until this end time message came down
Manu ki, i ante kalavatthamam vichananta variki, manu, yavarnani, manu teeridu
Thirdly
Mudavu
It tells us what is the relationship between him and me
Idi een chapputunante, manu ki, devu nikunna samvathani, teeridha, i ante kalavatthamam
Second point, okay, the first point It reveals that God It says, he that was The unapproachable God was living in the midst of the light The unapproachable God
Yavaru, samiipparani, teeridshuro, aine maatrima, honavu
It reveals him to you
Ane, tanudan, neeku bayalparichkuntadi
What reveals him to you? The end time message
Aine, neenu, aine, neeku, tamu, eegidhiga, bayalparichkuntadi, ante kalavatthamam, aine, tanudan, neeku bayalparichkuntadi
Okay, he is God, fine
First, aine, devu
Now, who are you, who am I? What are you, what am I?
Sari, aju, aju, varanu, asli, first, nuv yavarni, needi yavarni Adi teeriskodu, mukhim
What is the purpose, your purpose on this earth?
Asli, nee, pumme, vandhadi, aju, udeshi, enti, asli
It is just, it is just to be born of some father, mother, some parents You are born, you will grow up a little child, you become a young woman, you get married Then you bear children, and then your life is over, you die, that is all
Ande, udeshi, kandante, andarukuthi, nattika, nuvukuthi, nattika, nuvukuthi, nattika, maladi, pellai, maladi, pelladu, kuthi, nattika Pakarodu, nuv maladi, pelladu, idi gata, udeshi Yadakka, na udeshi, meen neeku
All animals go through the same process, there is no difference
Andi, jendu, vada, aadavu, godhuni
So who are you, who am I, what is the purpose?
Asli, nuv yavarni, needi yavarni, asli, e udeshi, dapanu, pumme, mukhim
This end time message came and revealed to you and me The purpose of God's will in your life and my life
I ante kalavatthamam vichhi, nuv yavaro, o, needi yavarno, adi, neeku, naavu, teeridasta Adi, i ante kalavatthamam, aju, mukhim udeshi
And third thing, it reveals what is the relationship between that God and man
Mudavu, enti, a devu ki, neeku, machavu, samvathani, ane, i ante kalavatthamam, teeridasta
If you know this
Okkavali, neeku, teesinakai
You are in the end time message
Nee, i ante kalavatthamam, unnavadi
We don't need deep studies, you know Deep studies, it is necessary It should be given as a teaching, as a Bible study, we should know certain data
Manu, neenu, teeriskodu, vasi, eedo, vattapattam, parishodu, neelsanavu Idi, devu chake, kavu, prattekshat, maatramay, i prattekshat, varai, nuv ante kalavatthamalu, unnavan, teeskuntadi
I am not saying that that is not necessary, that is all needed for the church, for the growth of the church
Neen, e manu, nandha, aju, anta, teeridha, ausharle, neen chappuvaadi Adi, kavali, kathapati, nuv vaidchalegi, devu chake, prattekshat, vati, neeku teeskoni
But more important is to know that God knows myself And to know the relationship between him and me
A devu ki, neen yavarno, teesu Plus, naaku, aine, machavu, samvathani, kadi
If a child doesn't know the relationship between his father and himself
Okkavilavadi, athaniki, tan, dandri, machavu, samvathani, teeridhu, pote
Then he is not born of wedlock He is called a bastard child
Athan, athan, dandri, kuthi, navaari, father Athan, vaise, pummaari, kadi, lo, padkadi
So we should know our God, our Father
Manu, kappuvaadi, manu, devu, neeskavali, manu, dandri, neeskavali
With this thought in mind
Ie, aalachin, manu, mansalo, unte
We will go into the word of God
Manu, devu vaakyaanibadu, vada
As we have read just now, from Romans chapter eight, verses twenty nine to thirty
Ipre, manu, sariyamu, Roma pratika, yividavajayamu, yeravidamidi, muppi
For whom he did foreknow He also did predestinate To be confirmed to the image of his son This morning we saw, do not be confirmed to thee, to this world Do not be confirmed, to be confirmed to be like To be of the same makeup So Paul told us this morning in Romans twelve, one and two, do not be confirmed to this world So God wants us to be confirmed to the image of his son
Devu, neen, iki lokam, vana, chayedu, devu, neen, eseru, tana sorupam, devu, neen, teeskunali
That he might be firstborn among many brethren The Lord Jesus Christ should be the firstborn among many brethren, we are all brethren
Manu, mandaramu, sahavaduramu, prabhu, yesu, krishtu, manu ki, mottham, vandhadi, kuthi, navaari, dandha, manu, cheshta, sahavadur, antam
This is God's purpose in your life and my life
Idi, devu, aju, udeshi, mayudi, nee, jivitavu, na jivitavu
To be confirmed to the image of his son
Manu, aine, sorupam, neeku, maatshakame, devu, aju, udeshi, mayudi, yesu, krishtu, aju, sorupam, manu, maarakam
Now what image? Jesus, the body that was born through Mary And he was a little child, twelve years, he went to the temple And then he was thirty, he received baptism, at thirty-three and a half, he died on the cross His long hand, a sad countenance A weak body, not that image
Ikka, devu, sorupamante, aine, eedo, mariyaki, aye, eseru, pittari, kadi Manu, vala, valaki, pellikari, kadi, panidh, samshal, vayislo, manjigala, puchunari, kadi Aravata, aine, silu, ekkari, kadi, chalipari, kadi, mara, murrudu, murrudu, dava, leesari, kadi Adi, a, aikka, sorupam, manu, gunichu, maakatuna, a sorupam, alamunati, gattam, beshkoni, chukti, beshkoni Okkavakina, chala, palayenang, unnatu, vudhi, adi, kadi, devu, aju, sorupamante
That image anyone can make up
A, aju, sorupam, yavayana, manu, teeskova, vichani, adi, vichesinana
The prophet said, scientifically, in this age You can also have the nail scars In your hands, feet, and in your side
Manu, yirodu, vignanasaasam, eeyo, vutunante, neevu, vada, nee, vichathulki, meegu, unnatu, chupichkothu Kaalaki, meegu, unnatu, chupichkothu, saidhik, gaayavu, unnatu, chupichkothu, science, vignanasaasam, vutun
That does not make you confirm to the image of the Son of God
Adi, devu, aju, sorupam, neeku, maatshakame, kadi, maakal, maakal, kadi
Because he is not a man
Endku, aine, devu, manshi, kadi
He died, he rose
Aine, leekri, leechadu
Now what image is he?
Aine, kuna, sorupam, vikasava
He is straightforward
Aine, aakta, sorupi
So image, we have to be confirmed to the likeness of his image See, it says here, for whom he did foreknow, he also did predestinate to be confirmed to the image of his son
Yenduka
Twenty nine Twenty nine
Yenduka, tana kumaridu, aneka sahavaduri, esunam, devu, yavani, munduga, eriparichu Aine, aine, munduga, peechadi, yavani, peechu, aine, var, edukunali Var, aine, sorupam, maatshkora, kadi, aine, munduga, nenayichkora, kadi
Now, if we want to go to heaven If we want to go to heaven
Neen, manu, kavala, kavada, vichkute
If we want to be saved
Neen, maat, rakshinta, badharanukute
If we want to be taken, taken up in the rapture into eternal life
Neen, yettavadi, vada, anitthapu, proveshinta, vadi
God has, has made a model, a pattern
Devu, neenu, okka, namuna, ok, example, neenu, tayarche
You know, we get all these plastic products, you know All plastic products Even, even this one, it is made from a mold
Idi, miru, sharanate, idi, okka, namuna, okka, moud, okka, achu, vichchi, neenu, tayarche Idi, kalan, achu, vichadi, achu, neeku, neenu, pochunakai, kadi, idai, shape Achu, eser, shape, vichadu, a shape, vichadu
That mold is first made
First, manu, aachu, tayarche
Then the material is poured into that mold, and then it is taken out
A, achu, tayarche, thavata, i mikirali, karigichi, achu, vichhi, one shape, aarupi, thavata, achu, vichhi, i mikirali, tayarche
You take hundreds, hundreds of samples, it will all be the same
Meen, gana, vandhavastu, kayarche, kadi, i vastu, yala, vundhi, achu, yala, vundhi, aayar, vichadi, vichadi, vichadu
You take thousand samples, it will be the same
Meen, vey vastu, vichkunavadi, aavu, vundhi, achu, vichadi, idu, vundhi
You take one large sample, it will all be the same
Nu, lakshmi, vichkunavadi, lakshmi, vada, etlamante, achu, eser, tayarche, thavata, vichadu
It will be the same as it was made in the mold
Idi, yala, vundhi, achu, aachu, yala, tayarche, vichadi, namuna, yala, vundhi, arakai, vichadu
So God has made a mold, a pattern, a model And we are supposed to be confirmed to that image, that model
But he called me when I was twenty-two years old.
I am the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
My mother died when I was eleven years old.
Now, I am the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
And she died of sickness, tuberculosis, TB.
TB is not just a disease.
And we know the traditional way of the Roman Catholic Protestants, they will take the body to the church, they have a funeral service and then they will take it to the cemetery.
If you go to the Roman Catholic Church, if you go to the Roman Catholic Church, if you go to the Roman Catholic Church, you will be forced to go to the church. You will be forced to go to the church.
I was eleven years old.
Now, I am the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
So when my mother died, we went to a church there in Thambram. We were living in the centre of the heart of the city of Chennai, that is Royapuram.
We were going to the Tamil Nadu, to the city of Chennai. We were going to the city of Chennai.
My mother died in a TB sanatory in Thambram. So near my church we went and from there, we married her nearby. Where nearby, where I am living now, I go that way every day. Okay.
We were going to the TB hospital. You were going to the hospital. Where did you go?
The priest in charge, who performed the funeral service for my mother, he after six months or one year, he came and transferred from Thambram to Royapuram Church.
When you go to the Roman Catholic Church, you will be forced to go to the Roman Catholic Church.
So when I saw him, I recognized him. He is the one that buried my mother.
You were looking at him, you were looking at him. You were looking at him.
And he was also an Anglo-Indian like me.
He was also an Anglo-Indian like me.
So I got closely attached to him.
Now, I am related to him.
And he was very kind to me.
He was very kind to me.
Then I was about twenty years old.
Now, I am the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
I started going to church regularly at that age, twelve years.
When you are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church, you will be forced to go to the Roman Catholic Church.
They will ring a bell at about five thirty in the morning, early morning, five thirty. A thick rope, a heavy bell. I will go and hang on that rope. Because I was such a little fellow.
When you go to the Roman Catholic Church, you will be forced to go to the Roman Catholic Church. When you go to the Roman Catholic Church, you will be forced to go to the Roman Catholic Church.
Then I became an altar boy, helping in the church service with the priest.
You will be forced to go to the Roman Catholic Church.
You would have seen the Roman Catholic Church, there will be little boys, they are called altar boys. One red gown and over half size on white thing they will wear.
If you go to the Roman Catholic Church, you will be forced to go to the Roman Catholic Church.
So I became very close, very much involved in the church activities.
You are related to the Roman Catholic Church.
These elderly people started loving me.
You are the one who loves me.
I used to go for early morning service and help.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
So the elder people after the early morning service, they will take me home, they will give me some biscuit and coffee and send me.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
This priest, he found that there was something in me. He wanted to send me to the Roman Catholic seminary to study theology and become a priest.
If you go to the Roman Catholic Church, you will be forced to go to the Roman Catholic Church.
At one time, one of his colleagues who studied in the seminary with him, he was from Archmere. Archmere, he came to Chennai and he visited this priest and he discussed about me. So he said, okay, I will take the boy with me to the seminary, sit away.
I am the priest of the Roman Catholic Church. I am the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
So he told, he asked the elder brothers and his father and discuss with the family and prepare and send them.
He was the priest of the Roman Catholic Church. He was the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
So he sent two friends to call me. I came and met that, he was a bishop at that time, his associate was a bishop. They laid hands on me, prayed and he went away and I went away.
When you go to the Roman Catholic Church, you will be forced to go to the Roman Catholic Church.
That was the last time I went to Roman Catholic Church.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
How much I got involved in the Roman Catholic Church. To that extent, I went opposite, fully opposite direction into the world. I became a worldly boy at the age of thirteen.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church. You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
From that age to the age of twenty-two, then my father died when I was fifteen years old. And then I became even more worse, 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 worse.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church. You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
But when I was twenty-two years old.
Now, I am the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
The God that formed you before the foundation of the world.
God knows me.
He came searching for me.
He was the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Through my pastor.
He was the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
I was living in my uncle's home, I was working in a company, I was paying my money and staying and eating with them.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
My uncle and my pastor were childhood friends.
My uncle, my mother, my priest, they were children.
One day, they are meeting somewhere on the road and he said, hello Brian, how, my uncle named Brian. Hello Brian, how, hello Ravi, Ravi, how are you, Ravi? My pastor's name is Ravi, so he said, Ravi.
So you were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
Ravi said, Brian, I am fine. I accepted Lord Jesus Christ. I am same. Brian, you also accept Lord Jesus.
Ravi said, you are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
So my uncle Brian, he invited Pastor Ravindra, come home, Ravi, please, come to my home and tell me about that.
My uncle, my mother, my priest, my uncle, my uncle, my uncle.
They were also Roman Catholic family.
They were Roman Catholic family.
So one day Pastor Ravindra is coming to my uncle's home to give the gospel to my uncle's family, not me.
When you go to the Roman Catholic Church, you will be forced to go to the Roman Catholic Church.
It is not for me because my uncle invited him.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
When Pastor Ravi came there.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
It was a very small house.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
One room, one kitchen, that was all.
One room, one kitchen.
They were sitting and talking inside, I was sitting outside and I was doing some wrong things.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
No, that Ravi knew me, he knew my father, my father's family, he knew very well.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
So he was very kind to me. He visited two times, three times, four times and he was preparing them with the gospel.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
And one time, he is asking them, are you ready for baptism? Yes, brother, we will take baptism, brother, and he is preparing them. And when he is coming out, I asked him, brother, can I also take baptism? I am sitting outside and listening, I am not in the discussion. He is talking to them, I am sitting outside and listening. And I asked, can I take baptism? He said, yes. Do you realize your sin? You need a savior, confess your sins and prepare yourself.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church. 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 You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
So I prepared myself, I took baptism with my uncle's family. But after some time, they have gone away.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
But by the grace of God, I have stood with this word, with the gospel, with this end time message and these forty-two years, the Lord has been leading me. Now, after some, a few years, I accepted Lord Jesus Christ in nineteen eighty.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
In nineteen eighty-seven, there was a small disturbance in the church and the pastor appointed me as elder to the church because I was married at that time.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
In nineteen ninety-four, my pastor, he had, he had the same leading as that Roman Catholic priest had, he saw in me. The same thing my pastor also recognized in me. He arranged a two-day special meeting and had me ordained to be a pastor.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
So it was not God's will for me to go to the Roman Catholic seminary to become a priest for the Roman Catholic church to serve idols and do idol worship.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
But he wanted me to be a servant for the living God.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
That is why he came, he came searching for me and called me when I was twenty-two years old.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
That is how he meets everyone of you in some way or the other.
You were going to the Roman Catholic Church.
That is how he has met Brother Manis also, just four, five months back, he has come to the knowledge of this end time message.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Amen?
Amen.
Are you happy?
Amen.
So you see, whom he did predestinate, then he has also called.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
And whom he has called, then he has also justified.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Now what is justification?
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
When you accept God's provided land, God's provided sacrifice on the cross of Calvary.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
You accept that you are the sinner and you need a savior.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
And you, you believe that when you accept that sacrifice by the blood of that sacrifice, your sins are forgiven.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Then you are justified.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Now the Protestants stopped with that. They say, Martin Luther said, the revelation that God gave Martin Luther, the just shall live by faith. That was the message to that church age. The just shall live by faith.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
They say, we are justified.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Lord Jesus, our prophet teaches us.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Baptism in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Will not save you.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Don't get afraid, okay?
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Baptism in the name of Lord Jesus Christ, it indicts you into the fellowship of the saints.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Before, I was a worldly man.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
I was living in sin.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
When I see Pastor Alicia, I will run away.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
When I see this brother or this sister, I will go and hide myself.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
I was ashamed of myself.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
But after I repented and I confessed my sins and I took baptism, now I am coming boldly into the fellowship of the saints.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
So the prophet teaches us, baptism, water baptism, indicts us into fellowship with the saints.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Baptism of the Holy Ghost.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
It indicts you into the body of Christ.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
They are two different things.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Okay.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
So he says, whom he did predestinate, then he called, whom he called, he has justified.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
And whom he justified, then he has also glorified.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
But here Paul is telling us that whom he justified, he has glorified.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
But our prophet gives us the correct revelation.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
He says, there are three steps of grace.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
It is one is justification.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Sanctification.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Baptism of the Holy Ghost.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Then we are glorified.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Justification.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Sanctification.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
What is sanctification?
You are made clean and kept away, preserved for a particular service. You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Now Sister Alicia, she is sweeping in the morning, cleaning the floor in the morning.
Sister Alicia, you are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
She finds one small cup in there, a good cup, but it is full of sand, mud, dirt, dust.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
She will take the cup and look at it, this is a good cup, why did it come here?
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Now she has taken the cup.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Then she goes and cleans the cup.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
She cleans it perfectly.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
But what am I going to do with this small cup?
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
If I want to serve coffee, then I have the shelf, the rack, I have all the coffee cups there.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
What can I use this for?
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Okay, now I don't think anything, so I will keep it in one place.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Now suddenly, she runs out of sugar. Pastor James of Chennai has come and he wants a cup of tea. Suddenly there is, sugar has run out, empty.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
She is calling the little girl, what's her name, Joyce Maglin, huh? Joyce Maglin, come, 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 go to that auntie next house, you get some sugar, pour some sugar.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Later we will go to the shop and we will buy one kg, two kg, now I want little sugar.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Which, which cup can I send? This, this vessel is very big, I only want hundred grams sugar. This is very big, this is very big, this is, then she remembers. I, that day I cleaned one small cup and I left it in the corner. Take that cup, where is it? Go and bring the sugar, exactly what is needed, she brings in that cup.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Amen?
Amen.
So when God sanctifies you, he is, he is keeping you ready for his service at his appointed time.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Now the cup has a responsibility.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Sister has kept that cup in one particular place.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
That particular place is the church where God has placed you.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
You be where God has blessed you.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
One day when he needs that small cup, he will come to that corner in the shelf, where is that cup, where is that cup, where is that cup?
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
When he comes searching for that cup, that cup should be in the place where he has placed it.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
That cup will wait one day, one week, one month. This madam is not making any use of me. I will go to the next shelf or he will come jumping down from here, he will come, from there he will go rolling, go rolling down the stairs. Go out of the gate, he will keep on rolling. Then I can just praise the Lord, hallelujah, I will go there.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church. You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
God will not come there searching for that cup.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
He will come searching to use that cup where he has placed it.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
My precious brother, sister, God has called you.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
If you have been washed by the waters of the world.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
If you have been justified.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
If God has sanctified you.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Peter says, you humble yourself in his mighty hand that in due season he will raise you up.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Amen?
Amen.
Humble yourself.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Submit yourself.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Under his mighty hand.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
This pastor is not good.
He was the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
That deacon is not good.
He was the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
That sister is not good.
He was the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
No, I cannot adjust with them.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Then you are going, you are white and dusty.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
God will not come and use you, my precious.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
So we see, whom he has justified, he is sanctified.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
The three stages of grace, justification, sanctification.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Baptism of the Holy Ghost.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
It is very, very, very important that we receive the baptism of the Holy Ghost.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
At two thirty-eight, says.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Repent, everyone of you, and be baptized in the name of Lord Jesus Christ for the remission of your sins.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Then you shall, you shall see the gift of the Holy Ghost.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
The gift of the Holy Ghost.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
The gift of the Holy Ghost is, God is giving you a gift, master, he will take something, he will give someone, a gift, you take it.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
The gift of the Holy Ghost is God giving you something from the world to come. This morning we, we saw that we taste of the good things of the world to come.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
In Ephesians chapter one, we were being read that he has blessed us with all spiritual blessings in heaven.
You may have the gift of preaching the word.
You may have the gift of knowledge.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
The gift of wisdom.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
You may have the gift of healing.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
You may have the gift of casting out demons.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
You may have the gift of speaking in tongues.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
You may have the gift of interpreting the tongues.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
But that is not the baptism of the Holy Ghost.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
But the Lord Jesus Christ went to John and received baptism from John the Baptist.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
And he came out of the waters.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
A dove came down from heaven.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
And rested upon him.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
And a voice said.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
This is my beloved son.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
In whom I am well pleased.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
God has a program for his son Jesus Christ.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
And we are also sons and daughters of God.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
He has, he has the same program for you and me also.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
That is why we are here.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
For whom he did follow, he also did predestinate to be confirmed to the image of his son.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
So what God did for his son Jesus Christ, he will do for every son and daughter of God who was chosen before the foundation of the world.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
So when Jesus Christ taken baptism, he is coming, the voice from heaven says, this is my beloved son, in whom I am well pleased.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Then he goes for prayer, for forty days fasting into the wilderness, he is tempted and then he goes into his ministry.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Then in Matthew seventeen, we see.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
He is taking Peter, James and John with them.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
And he goes on the mountain.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
And there before him, he gets transformed.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
The man Jesus Christ.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church. You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Is transformed for them as the eternal God.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
They have, they have seen his actual, original, genuine image.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Again a voice from heaven speaking to them.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
It is repeating the same words.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
This is my beloved son.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
In whom I am well pleased.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
But now it is adding, now it is adding.
You are the priest of the Roman Catholic Church.
Here he have. Hear, you, him. Because. Now God has given all his authority to the son. That is why the prophet said, in the rapture, which church will be taken up in the rapture? God has not set a seal of approval on any church. But he has placed it in his son. Therefore he said, you hear him, obey him. Hear his word and obey him. So as the son was justified, was sanctified and he was baptized with the Holy Ghost. Colossians 2:9 says. The fullness of God had. The fullness of God had dwelt in him bodily. The fullness of God had dwelt in Christ Jesus bodily. That is the baptism of the Holy Ghost. You can have a gift of the Holy Spirit. God can give a part of him. A small portion of him he can give you. God can give a small portion of himself to you. That is what all the world Christian churches are enjoying. But the bread is not satisfied with that. The bread wants all of Jesus' sin to go on. That is why the prophet said, all that God was. What God was, all that God was. He just squeezed and poured it into his son. And all that Christ was. He poured it into his church. So we have to come to that experience, to that position of Colossians 2:9. Amen. And after that, we go to the glorified position. Okay, now, brother, it is nine ten. Yeah, I can continue. Praise the Lord. So now we have seen justification, sanctification and baptism of the Holy Ghost. Now Paul only told us this. And again, he is confirming that in the book of, in the epistle of Ephesians. Chapter 1. Verses 1 to 14, we will read fast. It will be helpful if someone else can take the bike and read the scriptures. Yes, Christ do our. They will be proud of my worship. He is saying. They will be proud of him. They will be grateful to him. Okay, okay, we stop it. Here Paul is elaborating the same subject. Then he spoke of it in two verses. Here he is speaking about it in fourteen verses. So we see in verse four. According as he has chosen us in him before the foundation of the world. For what? The next line is saying. That we should be holy and without blame before him in love. Christian life is not to live as you like. This morning we saw that we have to walk in newness of life. What for God has called you, chosen you? Before the foundation of the world, he has chosen you for what purpose? That we should be holy. Your next door neighbor should not point finger and say, that sister, oh, she has very bad mouth. Oh, she will go to church, she will say, praise the Lord, hallelujah, she will dance in the spirit. But when she comes to the market, she is talking such bad words. See, they should not point fingers, that brother. Oh, he will go to church, white shirt, white pants, black Bible on the table. But Monday, Sunday he will go to church. Monday evening when he is returning from work, you can see him in the bar. The world should not point fingers. God has chosen us before the foundation of the world to be, to live holy and blameless. The devil will try to search, 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 search your life for false to indicate you for God. Like he came before the assembly of God and said, indicating, Joe. But you and I should be like Joe. God asked him. Say it, did you see my son, Joe? He is an upright man. He fears God. He departs from evil. God should say the same testimony about you and me. He has called us, he has chosen us before the foundation of the world to live on this earth a holy and blameless life as a witness to him. First Peter 2:9 says. First Peter. Chapter 2, verse 9. Sorry, sorry. First Peter, chapter 2, chapter 2. I made a mistake. Yeah, I got it correctly, but that's my problem. First Peter, chapter 2, verse 9. What does he, where does he call you from? He has called you out of darkness into his marvelous light. What for? You are chosen generation. A royal priesthood. And holy nation. A peculiar people. What is peculiar? You behave in a particular manner. People are not able to understand you. They are not able to accept you. Say, you mean this sister, oh, you go and talk to her. She will first thing she will say, accept Lord Jesus Christ. Come to church, receive Holy Ghost, be baptized. She will say that. We have Christmas. We are taking all new dress for our children. We are making cakes, making sweets. They will say, no, 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 we don't want all that. We don't celebrate birthday, we don't do this, we don't. What people are these? What people are these? We don't understand. Peculiar people. These people will not join with others. They are called out people. Called out from darkness unto his marvelous light. Which light? The unapproachable light where God dwells. We are not just to be born here and live a life of fifty years, sixty years, seventy and then go to the grave and finish, no. We are called to reign within us kings and priests forever and ever. He has predestinated us, verse 5. Having predestinated us under the adoption of children by Jesus Christ to himself according to the good pleasure of his will. I mean, now this morning we saw Romans 12, chapter 12, verse 1 and 2. His body is a holy and acceptable sacrifice unto God. To prove that good and acceptable and perfect will. Good is good and acceptable and perfect. You read the verse, you read the verse. What is the Bible verse you read? So to prove that good and acceptable and perfect will of God. The boy is revealing that perfect will here. He has called you. He has chosen you. He has predestinated you. To the adoption of children. What for? To be adopted as children of God. Galatians chapter 4. Verse 1 to 7. What for? So here we see. That the air. As long as he is a child. Different nothing from his servant, though he be lord of all. We know these big landlords. In Andhra Pradesh, I know there are big, big, big landlords. And many people have come to Tamil Nadu many years, forty, fifty years ago and they have purchased lands there and they are very, very, very big landlords. They will have family, they will have children, four or five sons. And they have big farms and fields and everything. They will have lot of people working in that fields. Now their sons are not servants. Their sons are heirs to their property. But what they will do. When the son comes of age. If they, the father will send him into the fields to work with these servants. They will have to go and work when anyone comes on outside, they will not know the difference between the servant and the son of the landlord. They will all look alike. This jemita will have some supervisors. So, after some time, when the fullness of time comes, when the fullness of time comes. The jemita will call the supervisor. My five sons, I have sent them to field to work. What is your opinion about my sons? The supervisor will give his hardest opinion. He will say, "The elder boy, oh, he is elder boy, but he is very proud, he is saying, 'Oh, I am a father's." The younger boy, the youngest boy, he is very, very playful, he is so childish, he is not matured. The second boy, he is hardworking, but he is not honest. The third boy. The third boy. He is very careful about the work he is doing. He is bothered about his father's property. He is working hard to protect it. So, when the supervisor gives this report. Now, our supervisor is the Holy Spirit. He is giving a report about you and me to the father. He is watching over you and me. Amen? So, when father gets the report. Then he prepares a day. He calls for a big feast. He calls all the people of his village. Many people will do business transactions with the father. He will hold that. He will prepare a big stage. He will tell the servants, "Put a chair for me." He will call all his sons, his all his family. On the stage. Then he will get up. He will take the mic. He will greet all the people who have come for the function. And he will say. "My dear friends." "You have been doing business with me so many years." "My dear friends, you have been working as my servants in my field." "But now I am getting old." "So, I want to give my responsibility to my next heir." Now, when he says that the elder son will get excited. He will think that the father is going to call him and give him the responsibility. The second boy will say, "My elder brother, he did not do any work, I worked very hard in the field, our daddy is going to give to me." The third boy will think, "I have two elder brothers, I cannot ask for that, it is not for me, it is my two elder brothers." He will humble himself. So, as the music is going, everything is going on, great grand ga party is there. Then the father will call one of his servants. He will bring a new dress. He will call his third son. They can stand next to him. He will take his hand. You know the boxing match when they finished the wrestling? He will, before everyone, he will say, "This son." Though he is an heir. But he worked as a servant in my field. So, now, I adopt them to my ownership. That father has so many sons. But he is adopting one son to become his heir. So, servant will bring the new dress, put it on him. The father will take his ring. In those days. If they want to put a seal on anything. That seal will be the ring. So, he will take his ring. And he will put it on his son's finger. And he will say. "My dear business friends." "If you want to do any business in future." "Do not come to me." "Come to my son." "He is heir to all that I have." This is the adoption by the Holy Ghost. This is the baptism of the Holy Ghost. By the daughter of the Holy Ghost. You are adopted as son of God. And you are placed positionally in his body. So, now, we have become sons and daughters of God. In 1 John, we read this morning, 1 John, chapter 3, verse 1 to 7, "Now, we are the sons of God." Brother, please read that, 1 John. Chapter 3, verse 1.
You are the son of God. You are the son of God. Now, we are the children of God.
But it does not yet appear how we shall be. But when we see him. When he appears. We shall be like unto him. This flesh and blood, these physical eyes. Pure and eyes. Cannot see him. He is here, but we cannot see him. Because he promised that two or three have gathered my name, I am in your midst. He is here, my Lord, brother, sister, he is standing here. He is standing beside you. He is standing beside you. We cannot see him. But there will come a day. When we will be changed like unto his own image. That we will see him as he is. Now, we cannot see him because. We are children of God. We are not yet taken into adoption. So, when we are taken into adoption by the baptism of the Holy Ghost. We are positionally placed in the body of Christ in the. In the pyramid. We are positionally placed in our right position. Where God has placed you. You have to remain there, abide there. John 15:7 says. "If you abide in me." "And I, and my words abide in you." "Whatsoever shall ask is a big." So, we have to abide. Abide, submit yourself unto his mighty hand, that in due season he may raise you up. So, now we saw justification, sanctification. And baptism of the Holy Ghost. Now, same Ephesians, chapter 1. Verse 12 to 14.
You are the son of God. 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 You are the son of God.
Brother, brother, I said 12, 13, okay. Yeah, he is reading correctly, okay, fine, God bless you, God bless you, okay. The verse 13 it says, "In whom also he also trusted." In whom he also trusted. Mirnu, after that he heard the word of truth. The gospel of your salvation. In whom also that he believed. He was sealed with that Holy Spirit of prophets. So, God, he seals you with the Holy Ghost. This is different from gift of Holy Ghost as promised in Acts 2:38. What is his seal? Prophet says, "The seal is fast at assurance." The seal is a security, a protection. Now, what is the assurance? Now, tomorrow, after the meeting is over, I am returning to Chennai. After one week, I write a letter. I put it in a cover. I seal the cover. I write two addresses. Pastor Elisha. Bhage Swaram. I put the PIN code number. Other side, I write from address, R James. Then, the two other side, I stick one stamp, I fix one, one rupee stamp. I go and drop it into the post box. The postman, they have their beat, every one hour they will come, they will open, they will collect, put in a bag, on the post office. The first thing they do in the post office. The postman will come and throw, open the bag and throw all the letters on one big table, limestone personally. There will be another man, he will sort of arrange it in a sliding manner, one over the other like that, he will arrange it. There will be a big pot here. And there will be a big stamp. Daily, they will change the date. This man's workers, all the letters, he will put it in such a position that he can see the one rupee stamp on top. With the left hand, he will move. Right hand, right hand, tap, tap. He will push it, but his eyes will be on the letter if the stamp is there. Anyone covered no stamp. It will come this way. It will go on the floor. It is rejected. But once that post office, that post of local post office address, see with the date, is put on the letter. Then it goes to the next section. They will segregate area wise. Andhra, Kamru, Kerala, and Ghana, they will separate. They will go to separate bags. They will find the bag. Now, the bag is put on scene. It will go to the railway station. It will go to a particular train that is going to a particular state. There is a centralized postal department, there they will separate the local area. Then Bhage Swaram Post Office, the postman will bring the letter. How did that letter come here? I have fixed the one rupee stamp. That is my obedience. Then, the postal authority, they have fixed that field. When that seal is placed on that stamp on that letter. It is an assurance. That letter, the cover is going to the right destination. When God seals you with the Holy Ghost. It is the assurance. That you are going to your eternal destination. The prophet says, now the what is the seal? It is, it is your security. I saw personally with my eyes about a month back, I was standing waiting for a bus. There was a Tens, Tens Shoro, you know this Tens Shoro? They sell all sorts of garments and all sorts of things there. So, one van came for delivery to that. It was a double door, the back is fully closed, double door van.
Adi, a, door, le, puth, a, van, puth, ki, kavajayi, baram, na, ni, two door, le, two door, nu, di, anki?
From where it is coming, the company, the representative, sitting next to the driver, he has all the dispatch papers, invoices, and all delivered, charan, everything, nasan.
Ayaka, bus, ru, na, mi, yakara, uchi, vast, ravi, lo, ayana, ne, kuru, da, kani, yavu, ru, kewa, lis, ni, a, bus, ru, kewa, lis, ni?
He is taking that, going into the trench showroom, he is going meeting the manager.
Ayana, po, a, akka, manager, le, kavastu, a, trench, showroom, manager, le, di, keli?
Manager rings the bell, the security goes there.
A, manager, po, a, pil, kota, na, security, vast, alu?
Security, go and check.
A, security, il, po, a, chak, check, chaya, vaya?
The security comes, standing at the vehicle.
A, security, uchi, a, vehicle, ne, kuri, chustalu?
But the vehicle is locked and sealed.
A, vehicle, yara, mu, na, a, ta, na, vesi, moktu, seal, chesha, enti, mudrichu, baram, enti, go, enti?
Now, we have, uh, some sealing which you cannot tamper with.
A, sealing, uchi, e, kar, baram, le?
All these containers going to export, and already have sealed beautifully.
Valu, padhumur, ek, de, sa, a, a, container, le, tham, enti, purthi, ka, seal, chesha, kardtari, mudrichu, kardtari?
So, after the security person came and checked and found the seal intact,
Ayana, a, security person, uchi, ayaka, muttar, kar, keta, vesi, na, dhus, chusi?
Then they break the seal.
Ayana, a, muttar, mu, paga, go, ti?
Open the door.
Open, door, open, chusi?
Take the goods.
A, bus, ru, kis, bari?
Check it against the, uh, invoices.
Akka, vunna, kuru, ta, kati, a, bus, ru, unni, a, even, prakidan, chik, ches, bari?
Then it is taken into the stock of the, uh, organization.
Akka, uchi, ayana, shop, lu, kis, kai, pata, na, bus, ru, anki?
So, what is that seal on that vehicle?
Ayaka, si, a, muttar, e, a, vehicle, le, vunna, muttar, e, ki?
That seal is the security of the, of the goods inside the vehicle.
Ayaka, muttar, e, ni, vaa, kura, bus, vunna, bus, ru, le, battr, sa, enti?
The vehicle is the church.
A, vehicle, le, a, vehicle, le, a, vaa, ni, le, saka, ni, vaa, ni?
You and I are the brothers of God, sons and daughters of God.
Neevu, ne, a, devi, pele, mai, nam?
And God has sealed you with the Holy Ghost.
Devu, nino, parishitaatna, mu, cheta, vatthanam, cheyavu, na, aapma, cheta, mudrichu, te?
You are secured.
Neevu, battr, ni, vunna, bu?
The devil cannot tamper with that seal.
Ni, ayaka, a, de, mu, uchi, a, muttar, e, chay, le?
The devil cannot touch the goods.
Ayaka, de, mu, uchi, a, bus, ru, le, ta, kai, le, mutu, baram, le?
God has sealed you.
Devu, nino, mudrichalu, ka, badi?
Your destination is sure.
Ni, a, kam, stam, nu, charam, nu, kam, pur, se, ka, pramis, ra, ki, vanta, ru?
So, I think we will close, we will go to Ephesians chapter four,
Manam, pogitsu, baram, nu, A P C, na, kura, chaimu?
Verse thirteen. So, this is in continuation with this morning's sermon also.
Parishit, nu, sampur, lavana, ku?
Four, thirteen, Ephesians chapter four, verse thirteen.
Devu, parishitaatna, mu?
Devu, parishitaatna, mu?
Dukka, parshudi?
Dukka, parshudi? Vimojali, janam, varam? Ayana, entu?
Me, mudripa, bari?
Me, mudripa, bari, na?
Amen. Hallelujah! This morning, we saw, what should we do?
Iro, padi, man, dhus, chus, nu, asa, man, e, chay, a, ni?
Present your bodies,
Neevu, ne, a, sinidhavala, samarpichko, vadi?
A holy and acceptable sacrifice.
Satyeva, ya, mu, na, devu, ki, ninnu, neevu, samarpichko, vadi?
Under, under God.
Devu, ki?
Walk in newness of life.
Neevu, no, thur, jeev, thur, mu, nu, ki, na, vadi?
If, if God has called you,
O, gur, devu, nini, pre, chen, enti?
He has justified you,
Ne, ni, thim, thur, uchi, chen, enti?
He has sanctified you,
Ne, suddhika, chen, enti?
You don't be in a hurry to take faith with anything.
Neevu, e, vela, kura, gandhar, baram, le, parishita, gandu, neevi?
You wait,
Neevu, edhu, chus, na?
Till God fills you with the Holy Ghost.
Devu, nino, tan, aapmu, thu, nimpe, thu, vati, edhu, chus, nu?
If you are not patient enough to wait,
Neevu, edhu, chus, enti, o, piti, ki, lag, padi?
If you are in a hurry,
Neevu, a, adra, a, adra, pitra, kapa, enti?
You will be filled with anything and everything.
Neevu, de, no, bati, nimpa, padi?
You will not see the seal of God.
Neevu, devu, ne, a, muttar, pandu, le?
So, my precious brothers and sisters,
Na, billy, meri, kuni, sahodari, sahodari, la?
This end time message,
Yantika, la, vattam, nu?
This is the essence of the end time message.
Di, e, ka, yantika, la, vattam, nu, e, ka, sa, ram, si, di, e, ide, yana?
So, now, we come to know that God,
Manam, ne, kura, man, devu, chus, kura, baram?
Now, we come to know ourselves,
Manam, manam, kura, chus, kura, baram, nu, yavu, antika, vattam, nu?
And now, we come to know the relationship between that God and myself.
Manam, yantika, la, vattam, nu, devu, ki, man, ki, mach, vunna, samban, kura, chus, kura, baram?
So, Paul is now advising us,
Devu, apostle, boli, ka, man, ki, igad, kus, saha, istan, alu?
As a last, final word,
Chippa, ma, ta?
Grieve not the Holy Spirit of God,
Devu, ni, aapmu, thukka, parsho, thu?
whereby he is sealed unto the day of redemption.
Vimojali, janam, varam, a, ayana, nyum, le, mudrichu, na?
Now, we have not yet received the redemption of the body.
Manam, sinidhavala, vimojali, mu, chid, na, man, va, alo, chus, enti?
As we saw in Ephesians here,
Manam, kadi?
Chapter one,
A, kura, chaimu, A P C, rast, bati, kura, chaimu?
That we should, verse twelve, that we should pay to the praise of his glory, who first trusted in God, in whom he also trusted, after that he heard the word of truth, the gospel of your salvation, in whom also, that after he believed, he was sealed with that Holy Spirit of promise, which is the earnest of our inheritance, until the redemption of the purchased possession, unto the praise of his glory.
Mariu, Kristo, nandu, mundiga, nenayichchi, nenayichchi, na, manam, mu, tan, mahimaku, keet, galug, cheyavu, nani? Devu, tan, chittaprakarmayana, sangkapumun, bati, manam, nu, mundiga, nenayichchi, ayana, entu, swasthyam, ka, yarparchenu? Ayana, tan, chittanu, saranga, chesina, nenayemu, chappu na, samasta, karyamalenu, jarigichu, chunadu? Meenu, satya, vaakyam, nu, anaga, mi, raksana, swatana, vini, Kristo, nandu, viswasmunchi, vatthanam, cheyavu, na, aapma, cheta, mudripa, badi? Devu, ni, mahimaku, keet, galug, enti, ayana, sappadichu, bale na, prajal, vimojali, galug, ne, mitta mu? E, aapma, manam, swasthyam, ka, sancha, galug, baram?
He has already purchased our soul.
Ayana, man, aapmu, nu, mundiga, kana?
God willing, tomorrow, we will see about the body is to be redeemed.
O, gur, devu, chittam, a, kai, rate, manam, chutam, di, gur, chu?
What is this redemption?
Asa, e, ki, vimojali, enti?
He has delivered his purchase of our soul on Calvary.
Ayana, kal, bari, chil, bari, lo, man, le, tan, swarak, mi, chik, kana?
But we are waiting for the redemption of the body.
Manam, e, a, sinidhavala, vimojali, pas, man, edhu, chus, nu?
But he has given us the earnest of our inheritance.
Ayana, manam, tan, aapmu, tan, sancha, kuru, man, ki, chunadu?
What inheritance? The kingdom of God, the one to come.
Man, kich, na, vati, a, swasthyam, enti, a, rao, chuna, prabacham, a, rao, chuna, tar, a, rao, chuna, devu, ni, raj, mai, enti?
He has given us the earnest of our, uh, advance.
Right, advance? Mundiga, vadi, ayana, man, kani, kich, ches, unadu?
He has sealed us with the Holy Ghost.
Ayana, man, parishitaatna, mu, mudrichalu?
We are waiting for the redemption of the purchased possession, unto the praise of his glory.
Ayana, e, a, sinidhavala, vimojali, pas, man, edhu, chus, nu, ayana, man, tan, swarak, mi, chunadu?
So, my beloved brother and sister,
Na, billy, meri, sahodari, sahodari, la?
My dear little, young brothers and young sisters,
Na, it, o, yapan, sahodari, sahodari, la?
I am so happy for you all.
Ne, mu, padi, ne, santosh, kapa, nu?
I love you all in grace, Jesus. I love you all in grace, Jesus.
Sambari, grace, Kristo, bati, ne, mima, tali, pri, chus, nu?
Ensure, make sure of your calling and election.
Mima, le, ne, serap, chuk, ondi, me, ru, pel, badi, na, varu? Ennu, kona, badi, na, varu?
Make sure of your calling and your election.
Mima, le, ne, serap, chuk, ondi, me, ru, pel, badi, na, varu, me, edhu, kona, badi, na, varu?
Be established in the word of God.
Devu, ne, a, va, kaya, bati, mima, sampur, le, ches, kodi?
Stand strong for the faith that was delivered unto these saints. In, in, Jam, he said, contend boldly for the faith that was delivered unto these saints.
A, parishit, nu, ke, yavu, na? Ayaka, va, kaya?
This was, badi?
Parishit, nu, e, baram, na, va, kaya, bati, mi, a, va, kaya, pas, nelav, man?
Stay strong in the Lord.
Parishit, nu, devu, devu, le, chen, ka, nelav, man?
If you have been called,
O, gur, devu, chesha, bari, enti?
Obey your calling.
Me, a, kura, pil, puni, kich, ches, kodi?
If you have been justified,
Me, yakara, ni, thim, thur, uchi, chacha, badi?
You aspire to be sanctified.
Me, ru, suddhika, an, varam, me, ru, mima, le, me, suddhika, chus, kodi?
If you have been sanctified,
Me, yakara, suddhika, chacha, badi?
You seek God and desire to be filled with the baptism of the Holy Ghost.
Me, ru, devu, kura, edhu, chur, ni, parishitaatna, bhaktis, bari?
And submit yourself to his holy, perfect will.
Mima, le, ne, samarpichko, devu, paripuru, chit, a, ki?
In his appointed time,
Ayana, tak, na, samayim, mu?
At the right time,
A, right, a, tak, na, samayim, mu?
He will take every one of you and use you to the glory of his name.
Mima, le, me, la, vunna, prati, baka, ni, ayana, kis, kodi, mima, le, tan, mahimaku, pas, ayana, baram, kantari?
You do not know how he will use you.
Me, re, chit, chus, baram, devu, yara, upay, baram, anki?
In the land of the Assyrians,
A, Assyrian, de, se, mu?
A little Jewish girl,
Chinna, uh, yudha, yudha, bali, ka?
Who was taken captive,
Ayana, bandi, ka, kis, koi, kis, koi, badi, ayamai?
She was in the house of Na, Naam, Maan.
A, Nayam, Maan, enti, lo, o, chinn, bali, ka, enti, e, yudha, pranes, mu, kis, kodi, ayamai?
She was a servant girl.
Ayana, paniman, sa, bruh, mu?
Her master was filled with leprosy.
Ayana, kangi, e, jama, lu, kusti, vadi, thau, vunna, Nayam?
She told, and then told her mistress, the master's wife.
Ayaka, a, e, jama, bari, ki, Elisa, pravak, pune, je, ayana, jep, ki?
There is a prophet in a mine land,
Ma, de, se, mu, lo, a, pravak, vunna, du?
If master will go there,
Me, ma, man, e, jama, lu, vadi, a, de, se, ki, vel, te?
He will be healed.
Ayana, sottam, baram?
Did Naam, Maan receive his healing? Did Naam, Maan receive his healing?
Did?
Did?
Nayam, na, tan, sas, kant, chus, chara?
Did he receive it?
Ayana, chus, chara?
How did he receive it?
Ayana, a, pata, anki?
By the testimony of a little girl. God will use you in mighty ways. He only wants a dedicated, he only wants a dedicated, a humble and a faithful heart. If we give ourselves to him like that, if we give ourselves to him like that, he will take and use you in a mighty way. So be careful not to grieve the Holy Spirit. Whereunto your seal and to the? Your seal and to your eternal destination. God bless you all. God be with you. Thank you for my devotion. Thank you for patiently listening to my preaching. I don't know if I'm really a good preacher, I don't know. In my church, I preach differently, I'll be very hard, very strong. Sometime my priest preaching will be a bit boring, dull also. But I saw that you all were receiving, accepting the word with a smile on your faces. Big encouragement to me. God bless you. Resurrect. Hallelujah. Devi Nikita. Amen. Chakka, we are all a little old, we are all a little young. Hallelujah. My children, my brothers, my sisters. Hallelujah. Many people have seen this. My wife is a very good woman. Her family is very good. My husband is a very good man. He is very happy. Hallelujah. He is very good. Wait here. Amen. Hallelujah. Amen. Hallelujah. Good luck to you. Amen. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Halt, praise the Lord. [Singing]